About thirty seconds.
That works.
So I'm here. As you guys all know, I'm Nicole Rautway. I previously worked for Kevin Smith's and S.P. Collins. I'm very excited to be working with all of you. A little background, I've lived here my entire life. I went to BFA, I went to Johnson St. College and University of Vermont. I'm married and I have two kids, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
And you're good to go for tomorrow?
I am. I'm gonna be here in less than twelve hours, so I was thinking about just sleeping in the other room. Got plenty of food.
Anyone, any questions for Nicole?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Wish you all the luck, and don't hesitate to reach out with questions.
Everybody's been fantastic so far.
Question regarding the election tomorrow. Traditionally, I don't know if it's a requirement, but at the end of the election, the candidates are sort of invited in to get a readout of the results. Is that gonna take place?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I've been kind of shadowing Sarah, because she put together all of this prior to. I know as soon as the election closes, we'll be doing, working with Anna down at the town, I believe, so I'm not sure if everybody's gonna be invited to that. We can, I can get you an answer in the morning if you want, if you're, are you gonna be here in the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll find out in the morning for you.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, thanks Nicole.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Item number three, is there anyone in the audience that has a comment? About on Zoom? Raise your hand if you have a comment. Seeing none, we're gonna move on to item number four. Basically, that conversation is revisiting the four-way stop sign at Federal and Lower Newton. Chip, do you wanna share on that, or do we wanna move forward and?
Motion to recess, second reading until October council meeting.
Is there a second?
Any particular reason?
Oh, the second.
I mean, I was happy to, I think, there's concurrence with some others that it might be good to see this in operation after schools in session. So if we recess, if you kind of open the hearing and quickly recess it, you can hold the second reading at your leisure if you wish at your next meeting without having to warn it all over again.
That was, that was the main reason, just seeing what the impact of the schools' traffic was. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Chip? Comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, we'll postpone that at least till the October meeting.
And I piggybacking with that, I'll make a motion to continue the emergency ordinance for the four-way stop. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to continue the emergency ordinance that we have. Chip, you wanna share anything on that?
Just, we have no other updates other than what we provided last month. We think it should continue to be in operation for now. This emergency ordinance would do that for us.
Marty, just a quick overview, all the demolition is complete for the most part?
For the most part, they'll be wrapped up, they'll be getting their equipment out of there this week.
So, traffic coming out of there.
They'll still have traffic going to and from the railroad construction project, but the big truck traffic from the concrete excavation will be out.
Thank you. Motion second to consider the continuation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, hearing done, motion passes to continuation of the emergency ordinance for a four-way stop on Lower Newton. We're now gonna move to item number six, which is first readings of zoning amendments. Chip will be covering those. We have four to discuss. So Chip, I'll turn the table over to you.
I provided a memo that has the four changes on it, quick paragraph on each one. I think I'll just go off of that. We're looking at, yeah, we're looking at a lot of paper, but in general, it's one amendment to be in compliance with state statute, which we really don't have a choice over. A couple clarifications of definitions, and then one large amendment that just takes existing policies in the zoning and takes them out of a summary table and puts them into a more detailed section on uses and dimensions for each zoning district. So the first one, the one that mentions Act 182, the state passed a rule that every DRB approval and every permit that has to do with site plans or conditional uses must last for at least two years before it expires. So we were looking at having to go into our rules and see if we've complied with that. See how long we say our site plan approvals and permits and conditional use approvals, how long they last before they expire. And we actually had to make a change. There were a couple instances where it wasn't a full two years. As we dove into it, we also saw that we had different sections that talked about different timelines for things. And in the general section near the end that talks about how long permits last, it didn't even, there were some types of permits that didn't last. So, we took this amendment to not only be in compliance with the new state statute, but to take everything in the zoning that talked about how long an approval lasts, and we put it in one section in Article nine. And we also clarified and made it very clear, and also made it consistent with state statute, the fact that if an approval or permit is appealed, it's technically not valid until that appeal is either adjudicated or your appeal period's over. And that's the kind of flavor of things that's being proposed. It's really just rules that we have to have or rules we already have, and just making them clearer. The second one, reformatting the zoning district descriptions and standards. Our zoning for a while has really had a cheat sheet that's serving a very important and fundamental purpose, and probably should not be a cheat sheet. We had one table for all the allowed uses in every district, and then with a lot of abbreviations. And then we had another table with all the densities and dimensions for every district. And there have actually been points where people have misinterpreted that, and administratively, we've had to explain what it's really supposed to mean to people. Generally, a town's zoning will have a section for every district, every zoning district, and say, here are the allowed uses in the district, here are the setbacks in that district. And yeah, it takes longer to read through it, but it allows you to be more specific and more nuanced for each district, and very clear about in this district, this is what you can do and this is how it has to be done. So this proposal is really to go to that. The Planning Commission actually asked us to keep one of the summary tables in, but we're still going to create an overriding, an overarching section for each zoning district, and it has all the same allowed uses, all the same densities and dimensions, it's just it's gonna be fully written out for each district. So that's the second amendment. The third one is just clarifying the definitions of dwelling unit uses. It can sometimes be confusing when you look at a property and you see a two-unit house and you call it a duplex. But the way that we use the term duplex elsewhere in the zoning, you could look at two-two, two-two unit buildings on a property and say, oh, it's two duplexes. But we have standards that talk about when you have a two-family use in total on a lot versus how many structures there are. So we got, we just add a little bit of clarity to, we got a single-family dwelling, when that's the only use on the lot. We've got a two-family dwelling, when that's the only use on the lot. And multifamily, when that's the only use on the lot. But we can also add a definition for a dwelling unit when it's in combination with other uses, mixed uses. So this is just adding to the definitions and to the descriptions of uses to make it clearer so that different standards that are supposed to apply to those are being applied to the right thing. And then the last thing is renaming the residential districts. Right now, we have a low-density district and a high-density district. And if we want to come up with a higher-density district, what are we gonna call it? If we wanna come up with a lower-density district or a medium-density district, what are we gonna call it? And we've actually had a situation where the Planning Commission several years ago went to a neighborhood and said, hey, you know, your actual neighborhood looks like the high-density residential district, but you're in the low-density residential district. If we rezone you as high-density, we're actually gonna remove grandfathered uses from your neighborhood, which is working just fine. But a lot of people came in and said, we don't wanna be high-density residential, regardless of the numbers and the densities. So having those subjective qualified terms in the name is an issue. The Planning Commission has suggested that we go to a rubric now where we name a residential district based on the number, a number that's based on the lot square footage you need for a single-family home. It's gonna be different for every district. So now we would have the R ninety, the ninety, R ninety-five-hundred, the residential ninety-five-hundred district and the residential seventy-five-hundred district. And if we wanna add a different district somewhere in the middle, we can just assign that number to that name. And it gets rid of the issue that we've had with the name in the past. It's really harmless in the end. But it's one of those things that does, it has been an issue in the past, so we wanna make the change. Those are the four proposals.
Thanks, thanks a couple of things, Chip. One is, in the renaming of the districts, a lot of people, I know it doesn't seem that way, but I think a lot of people when they're making their analysis to make a Saint Albans or their decision, part of their process is, what can be built around me, and what am I in for in the future? Is your reclassification, because there are certain things that are allowed in low-density and certain things that aren't allowed in low-density but are allowed in high-density, is your reclassification changing that at all?
It's just changing the names of the districts. It's not changing the districts at all.
The second thing is, I think there's a lot of talk now about the benefits of accessory dwellings. And I'm seeing a push sort of of for the city to approve accessory dwellings. And one of the problems that we have when we have accessory dwellings is it doesn't account for the amount of parking that a person has to have in order to have an accessory dwelling. And those kinds, those types of problems are what gives us our problems in the street and on the green belts. And is there something that the Planning Commission is deriving or deciding upon in order to make sure that when they approve an accessory dwelling, that it has to at least meet certain parking standards?
Unfortunately, I think from where you're trying to get at, the state actually just passed a rule that you can no longer require extra parking for accessory dwellings.
That's before, right.
Right. So you've got, you've gotta look at, say you've got a single-family homeowner lives there, and there's an accessory dwelling unit. That's what you see when you look at the building. You might see two water meters, you might see two gas meters. Under the state rules in zoning, we're still supposed to consider that whole thing a single-family home and permit it and only put the requirements on it that would, that would be applied to a single-family home, regardless of the accessory dwelling. So really, the only way, if we think there is a widespread concern about parking, the only way to take that into account for accessory dwellings would be to increase the parking required for all single-family homes, which we already required two, I believe. Maybe we should require more. There are some folks that think we should require less, but that would be where we could have that conversation. But otherwise, the state just took away our ability to require extra parking for accessory dwelling units.
Or the square footage. Could we do something on square footage?
That would be, that could be how you do it. You don't base the parking on dwelling units at all, you base it on livable square footage, which would include the accessory dwelling unit and, so that is one thing that the Planning Commission could look at to switch over to doing it a different way.
Can you have a peek at that?
Yeah.
And the other thing is, on page three of the materials that you handed out to us, in section nine oh three, you're talking about permits and approvals, and you're just crossing off construction permits because you wanna make it all permits. Is that, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, that little table that gets crossed out, that gets replaced with.
You just wanna use the term permit, not the construction permit?
Yeah, right.
Would you look at that first sentence in paragraph three on page three? Do you mean to keep that as being a construction permit? Or do you want that crossed off as well to just say permit? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's, yeah, we'll change that for the, change that for the second meeting. We'll cross that one out too. We had crossed it out in a couple other places.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah.
And I wasn't sure whether you were just wanting to have a construction permit paragraph, but it looked to me like you were trying to get rid of that term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
I was gonna ask about the construction piece as well. I just, I was curious on the setbacks for the, for the variety of doghouse two feet, pool two feet.
Yeah.
Seems awful close, and I don't know that I want another doghouse two feet in my. Are those the ones at the state?
No, that, those are rules that have existed, those rules were in place when I came on board. It's always been that way. So I don't have a lot of the history on how it got to that point. I can, I guess I can see a doghouse, a pool.
Depends on which district you're in.
I think in any residential district, it's two feet.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it depends on the intensity of development too. Pretty soon, we're gonna talk about Chad's Garage.
It's all legal.
Chad's Garage has an entire chapter.
It's a warehouse, right? I, I guess, like Tim, like if there's opportunity to discuss those, I think that would be.
Yeah.
Just two feet isn't much, obviously.
One of the things that we, when I was on the zoning board adjustment back then, and for a few who's on the DRB, we had a waiver provision in there where we could grant a waiver of the one-fifty percent of the requirement under certain circumstances. And over the years, that was taken out. And I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you a hundred percent. But if we brought the waiver provision back in, then in those circumstances where there wouldn't be a problem with that, they would be able to grant that waiver. Yeah, I, I understand that. And I, I looked at that when I was reading it, but I just couldn't, my mind, you just said something about it. Those are close.
They're very close.
Two feet is not a lot.
Any questions for Chip on these? Just a reminder, I think this, we can vote on it, but the consensus works as well, Chip, I believe.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any concerns before these move to a second reading? Hearing done, we'll, we will just consider, the consensus is that we will move to the next reading, Chip.
Thank you.
And are you, are you doing number seven, grand list errors and omissions?
Errors and omissions, yeah. When tax bills went out, it was a good chance to have some folks notice that some things were not the way they're supposed to be and get back to us as quickly as they could. So we're gonna try and make those corrections as quickly as we can. The first one, which has to do with the first two entries on the errors and emissions certificate, is that when our, when our brand-new, hard-working assessing staff saw a particular property transfer return come through, they didn't see the clues that they need to look for a condo declaration and actually create a new parcel in that building. Because what was happening is that portion of that building was actually being sold as a new condo. They, our staff instead accidentally just took the purchaser in that transaction and just thought they were buying the whole building. So this condo owner got a tax bill for the entire building, and that's when they knew, oh, they need to talk to City Hall. So we figured it out, and through errors and omissions, we can now go back. We've, we can create the new parcel for that condo. We've assigned it a value that's the same as another condo that already exists in that building. And then the person who owns the remainder of the building has a new value that just has the new, the extra condo value taken out of it. So everything's basically a wash for the owners at this point. So that's the first two entries that have to do with Wade and C2 and with Murphy. And then, for some reason, artists and residents got turned on for taxation. They've been tax-exempt the past few grand lists, and we still can't figure out why NEMRIC made them taxable. We didn't catch it before tax bills went out. And that's the kind of thing that probably should go on errors and omissions before the council too. So that's the second thing, really. The third, third thing on the certificate, the second issue tonight is having artists and residents be tax-exempt, because they are a qualified nonprofit.
You looking for a motion or a move?
Yeah, and the City Council signs the certificate.
So anyone have any questions for Chip on either of these transactions?
I'm moved that we make the corrections to thirty-four North Main Street with the condo, and also artists and residents go back to being nonprofits, so non-tax, non-taxable, tax exempt.
On second.
Artist and residents is at ten South Main Street. So we have a motion and a second? Any other questions, comments? Hearing done, all those in favor of the adjustment, say aye.
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 And the opposition, hearing done, the motion passes. Now we're gonna move on to item number eight, which is first reading of amendments to the PHSO regarding repeat violations. You're gonna do that, Chip?
Yeah, Marty and Matt and Dom might have some things to say about this as well, but when you look at zoning in state statute, if you have gotten to the point where you know someone's violated the rule, you've gone through the process, you've had to send them sometimes two notices, give them seven days. Even if that, that particular notice of violation is abated, if that property owner repeats that similar violation again within twelve months, you can start fining them again without having to resend the notices and everything all over again. When you look at our PHSO, which is not zoning, which is a separate ordinance, we didn't write that ability in to the PHSO. So every time we see an instance of a violation, the fire chief has to send a safety order and then start the fining at the requisite time after the safety order's issued. And it doesn't say that we're able to fine repeat violations without having to send the safety order again. So there are a couple properties where we've gotten in the position of becoming their property management team. Because they don't, so, because they don't mow their lawns until they get a letter from Matt saying, you need to mow their lawn. Or, or garbage in the green belt, items in the green belt. And that's not the way it's supposed to be. People are supposed to be taking care of their property based on the rules that everyone needs to follow. And you're supposed to know that you need to keep track of items in your green belt for lawn and that sort of thing. We wanna get out of the, of the business of being the ones who have to keep track of how people are supposed to be taking care of their property in light of the PHSO. So we've added for this first reading, in section nine, we've added item E, which basically says the same thing that zoning allows us to do in violations. If we get a repeat violation of the ordinance of a similar type, that's been the subject of a safety order on the same property within three hundred sixty-five days, it shall be subject to, and then it's just all, it's the exact same sentence about the fines that's in, that's further up about the fines, a hundred dollars a day, every day is a new violation, et cetera, et cetera, without having to send a separate, a new safety order.
Would you still send the safety order? This says common courtesy, I guess. And I realize you don't have.
I think they get a notice of the fine. They get a notice that they were fined.
Right there.
Yeah.
I think we also put language in the original letter stating that.
Yeah. We would adjust the safety order to say that if you, if this is repeated again, you're gonna be fined again. We're not gonna do the letter all over again.
Not the letter, but they won't get notified.
Yeah, they, they won't get the safety order letter.
Any, how are we making out? And I haven't, I didn't notice on the last staff report, how many were on your violation list?
We probably have twenty-five, maybe thirty.
Small ones, nothing major.
Repeat offenders, not major.
This is a little off-subject, but that house on almost a corner of Bank and Lincoln being renovated?
Yeah.
So.
The one on Lincoln?
Twenty-one, twenty-three Lincoln.
So being turned into a single-family?
Yeah.
Good to see.
That's been vacant for a while.
What do you guys think of changing the show to a May? You know, I think, within three hundred sixty-five days, may be subject to a civil penalty. You know, there's folks that we're dealing with every month. There's somebody else who might come in on the eleventh month of the year.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and odds are they're gonna call you.
Yeah.
And I think if you have a leeway to negotiate with them.
Got twenty votes on that? Bob, you're good with that, you're gonna make, Tim? You wanna make that change?
Mm-hmm.
I'm moved that we approved the first reading of the PHSO regarding repeat violations with the one change, with the word show being struck and may being added.
Motion by Chad, second by Murray. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, motion passes. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Last one question regarding that.
Chip, do you find that the, the public, the health orders are going out to rental properties more often than not, or single-family home or owner-occupied premises, or they're just, or over the board?
Rental property.
The rental properties?
Yeah.
By and large, rental properties?
By and large.
Okay. And is it the owner that's getting the notices?
That's right.
Thank you, sorry.
Any indication if they're in town or out of town?
Most are in town.
They're in town?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to item number nine, looking at the grand list update.
Thank you. So I just wanted to bring two items to your attention. No, no action on them, but they will both reflect, that's subject to future conversations. The first is the future of the USCIS facility, the Taylor Facility on Lower Wellman. It's been with us a long time. Many of you will recall the history of turning, turning Coop Field into a federal facility, one of the largest employers in the county. And as you're all aware, it's privately owned, leased to the federal government, and the immigration staff went out there for about a year. When we sent out the tax bills recently, the owner of that building challenged it and said, look, this is a very different property now than it has been for the last twenty years. It's been damaged, and the future of it is uncertain. And so, we had some wrangling and back and forth, and some experts on both sides. We've settled that at a reduction in value from fifteen to seventeen, seven point five, a cut in half. It's within the tax increment finance district, so it's embedded within what's called the original taxable value of that property. I'm asking you about the district. So, the fiscal impact in this year with that reduction is about a hundred and eighty thousand. So, the bulk of that is helped by the TIF, but over the long haul, that's an obligation of the city. So that has been moved towards. So that has been moved towards replacing that. We either replace it or we accept that as an obligation of the general fund. And where it goes from here, I think, is yet to be decided. It's one of four sites that they're looking for. There's two sites that are in the city, and so it's yet to be decided where that facility is ultimately meant to land. It's probably one of the most high-value developments and potential developments in the county right now, so. And if it doesn't return to that facility, then we'll sure have another conversation with the owner of that property. But it's just a heads up about the grand list. It's worth just putting it into context, that reduction this year is a little over 1%, 1.3. And the tax base has grown as a whole by 11 and 1/2% over the last 10 years. And it's all due to tax increment financing. So we know how to grow the tax base, we know how to replace that hole. And had we not done the TIF, you know, we'd imagine where we'd be. But as we get ready to come back before the end of coming months with the sort of the final TIF projects in plan, the thinking around that property will figure prominently into that analysis. And I just wanted you to have a heads up so you can see it in future meetings for the first time. Second item, it's not related, but it's another big one. We've got notice from the state that we need to conduct a reappraisal. Because we have statewide property tax, the state has an obligation to be sure that everybody's keeping score, if you will, the same way. And so if you're, what's called the common level of appraisal, which is a statistical measure of deviation in grand lists, gets below a certain level, they order you to do a reappraisal. And we've been ordered to do a reappraisal. It's really hard to find a firm to do a reappraisal right now. So this is a couple of years off, but we'll be in the process of selecting a firm and working with that firm out in the process and brief the council on it in some future meetings. But the reappraisal notice has been received and we'll be getting organized for a process in the coming months. When was our last reappraisal done? So many years ago, you think? You know, last time we did one right after I became the manager, but it was a book appraisal, I think 2011, I would say. It wasn't a full-scale reappraisal. And, you know, what, what's the best plan this time is yet to be decided. And we'll get some input from the firms about that. You know, I don't think we'll be doing book, a book appraisal again. And there's, you know, there's been $60 million in new investments since then, so. But one of the challenges will be aligning the commercial growth, which has had a lot of bricks and mortar growth, with the residential, which hasn't had a lot of bricks and mortar in some, but it's had a lot of increase in value. So is it, is it pretty common every 10 to 11 years these need to be done? It's one benchmark, but only in a community that's growing. I mean, there's some communities, you know, and, you know, bigger communities outside of the Northeast, they're constantly doing it, you know, the rolling reappraisal in Vermont. And before we had statewide property tax, you'd go decades, right? Because it didn't matter, right? It's only when we had the statewide property tax, which was '97, I think. I'm just asking because it seems like it's going to be every 10 years and it's $200,000 to do. Do we just start budgeting, put in our CIP for $20,000 every year instead of having to come up with $200,000 to do it? Yeah, yeah. That's not a bad idea. Depends on every, you know, like everything else is contextual, right? Depends on everything else that you're looking at. Might be good just to have it, and then, you know, if it doesn't go 10 years, it goes 15. Yeah, we did have it, and. We prepared for the last one, we did it for a few years before, too, so. Yeah, you know, but, you know, I mean, for the last 10 and 12 years, we've really been kind of like a business startup, right? In the shape of, you know, to make all this happen, right? I don't think the, I don't think the statistical model, but otherwise the PBNR process, I don't think it's built to deal with exponential growth like we've had over the last 10 years, right? And so I think when that happens, the model says, oh, that affects your C L A, and the model says, oh, you better reappraise. But you put, you put the growth of the grand list in mind, this will happen with the residential market everywhere.
A year ago, I thought we were at about 82%. Did you say we're below 80 now?
Yeah, do you recall what we're at now, Chip?
It's 85% now. So we're 84. something, and because we're under 85.
Oh, the threshold's 85, not 80. And then I, I need a point of clarification, and Tim, back me up on this, on mic two, I think. Well, he'll back me up, but agree with me. I sat in on a board of abatement hearing when Elman came forward and we turned him down. How do we get to this point? It doesn't go before the board?
Money, money back.
When did Elman come?
Do you remember this?
It was last year.
It was last year.
Well, last year, early this year.
Going to board of abatement and grieving your actually, your actual value on the grand list are, you know, they're two separate things. And if Elman, Elman didn't really have a good case for abatement. Because various aspects of the case, they, they, they were able to, there were other ways they could have made themselves whole.
A lawyer presented, did not do a good job.
They're, they were abating that year's taxes because of the damage they had. And their attorney was saying that that's why the building was vacant. And they had received insurance coverage for that. And I think loss of rent insurance as well. They were.
I don't think they were very well prepared.
Right.
That attorney wasn't very well prepared.
I think he had to leave to go feed his dogs at the end of the season.
And when the city abates, it's actually on the hook to pay what would have been paid to the education fund. It actually was the city in a worse condition when you go abate. When you grieve your actual grand list value, that controls how much you pay in municipal tax. It also controls how much you're supposed to pay in education tax. The city is not on the hook for the education tax, it's not supposed to be paid. Because of the new value.
So this is the time to cut a deal.
Yeah.
Thanks for that, Marty, I forgot about the damage piece.
And this is already paid into the tax rate for the bills that were mailed out, so the city is not short, in essence, this is already part of, part of the budget.
Do I have it?
No, that's just my mouse. Laura, have you heard of the? No. Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions on that? You need anything from us? You're good. Tom, going up for item number 10, banking resolution.
This is a fairly simple adjustment to the resolution, which required to be by peoples. Marley, as the clerk treasurer, is now removed from the banking resolution and Nicole is added. Other staff responsibilities are the same, in essence. Nicole and Chip can sign checks, that's consistent with our checks and balances. I can open accounts for the city, I can take out debt for the city, which is critical, a part of my job. And all that's the same as it's been before. We'll be back in front of you at some point, hopefully not too long, to modify this again when there's an assistant, or an assistant clerk, sorry. That may take a little while, so we thought best to do this now.
Does Sarah still need to be on there?
We, Sarah is on there only as someone who can do deposits. And then soon enough, we think, the next resolution, she'll be off that entirely. And the thought is just on occasion that the, it's not uncommon to have a couple people out for whatever reason, so having someone who can do deposits is, is helpful. It's not critical because our cash is good enough that if we skip a day here and there and put the money in the vault, we're okay. But we like to do them every day.
So the signature is on behalf of this, 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 this council and myself are just to reinforce what's being presented.
Yeah. Y'all need to sign that, and then the staff will sign them, and we'll get it to the bank.
Any questions for Tom?
I move to approve the municipal corporation corporate banking resolution that Tom has presented.
I'll second.
Motion from Chad, second by Marie, any further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye to the approval. And the opposition? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. And there, Tom?
That's it.
Thank you. We will move to council reports. Noel, we'll start with you, if you have anything.
I discussed that issue of, as you come off in, what was that, North Main, and you come down, you've got three hidden driveways. I was wondering if it could be a sign put there to notify somebody.
So what Noel's referring to is coming to the Newton Street lights, you hang a right, head down Lower Newton, and there's three, three homes and three driv, one, three homes, but three driveways. And you're proposing that that would.
Yeah, I would, I think it could be a benefit for the city, which will, if somebody drive in, they would see that. If they hit somebody or something like that, just, just, just put it out there.
Marty, you want to take a look at that on, coming off from Main Street? And then they tie into.
We'll just put curbs down through there. Yeah, shut those driveways off. Off the problem.
Anything else, Noel?
That's it.
Marie?
No, I have nothing.
Tim?
Um, I think I'm good for most of Ward one. I did notice, Marty, did you go to the old Canyon House on North Main Street?
Yep.
Did something just happen in that place? Half the windows are smashed out.
Yeah. Domestic situation.
Okay. That's all, I have not much.
Nothing else, Tim? Bob?
I went to congratulate or give Marty because a couple of days ago, there was tenants at 68 Ferris that moved out and they weren't able to take their, get their trash all the way in time. I called Marty at 7:30 and within one hour, the trash had been removed. So that's a pretty impressive thing for that. The only other thing I have is I was walking along.
Do you think the tenants were coming back more?
No, they weren't, they were nice tenants, but they miscalculated on their garbage removal, something like that. And he took care of it. And the other thing, I'm walking along yesterday, this morning, actually, off, right across the street, and this electric bike comes roaring at me on the sidewalk at a high rate of speed. And it could have been dangerous, it was dangerous for me, and it could have been dangerous for a small kid or something like that. So I don't know what we could do about that, but I hope that's not a frequent or a common occurrence, because that's pretty dangerous.
It's on the street.
There's an ordinance on the sidewalk right here.
There are supposed to be bikes on the sidewalk.
I know that, well, this is an electric bike on top of that.
Yeah, and you don't hear them coming.
I saw an electric scooter traveling Main Street where you sit on it.
Yeah.
Staying up with traffic and no helmet on that, but. One wipeout.
Anyway, that's all I have, I appreciate it.
Mike?
Things are pretty good, we're in court right now. We have much, oh, Coasey's playing August 24th, Poutsuits in the Park, seem to be going on.
Cross our fingers we've got good weather for everyone.
We'll, we'll get rained out, that's what. 14 stars on Sunday.
All right. I got one more question, one more thing. The other morning I came to the hotel to pick up somebody, and a car, a car come up the road, like you mentioned, stepping across, it would have been on the front of the bumper. I was wondering if you could have the police check, he was kind of speeding when he came up the street, Lake Street.
More often than not, probably.
Huh?
This happens more often than not, probably.
Correct.
But, yes.
Guess I mentioned it two years ago.
Sure. Chip?
The only thing I have, has nothing to do with Ward six, but I was listening to VPR the other day on my travel around the state, and they were talking about, well, it was some candidates for one of the statewide positions. And they were talking about how Montpelier had signed on to the equal pay compact. So I'm wondering if the city could look into that, because I think it would be, it would be good for us to be on that compact as well. So it's basically saying, you know, there's no difference in pay based on gender. Thank you.
For me, Marty, I, I was asked about, this probably isn't your favorite topic, but weeds along Main Street and the bricks and light holes, is that a cleanup task?
It's 6:00 AM, we've got a cleanup. Seriously, we do.
Your response on it has been pretty speedy when we brought stuff up, it's at a council meetings last couple of months.
And how?
It's just the algorithm feeds it to you.
And how about Crossbox, is there an update?
They've painted all of Main, Fairfield, all the connections coming on, they're doing late. They finished late down the alley, and they're doing the school room probably Wednesday. Tomorrow looks like rain, so we've got a crew that comes in at 3:00 AM to get a jump started on those, so.
And just a thank you for the Poutsuits in the Parks, good crowds last few weeks that I've passed through, and nothing but good reports from visitors and residents of the area. So commenting about how great the city looks, so keep it up. And a big thank you goes out to Kellen Keith of Wakefield for all their efforts. You know, that roll of flowers up on Church Street and shrubs look great up there, so thank you to them for all their hard work. I think that's about all I had. Last chance, anyone, anything else?
Everybody needs to be nice to my sister-in-law, Nicole, tomorrow, who's, you know, this is her first election chance to do as clerk, so.
You were trying to keep the seat, weren't you?
Polls, polls are open at 7:00, right? 7:00, 7:00?
7:00, 7:00. All right, let's move on to approval minutes, two meetings.
Motion to approve minutes, May 17, 4:22.
Motion, second, to approve the minutes from 5:17, 22?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Extension Ward one.
Okay, move on to approval minutes from 7:27?
Motion for July 27, 7:00 to 22.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ward four, distinct.
How do we get all the way back to May 17? What did we miss there? Is that, is that right date?
That's the right date.
Sometimes it takes a little bit to catch up.
That was a special meeting. That was a regular meeting.
That was one of those.
The dog.
The dog.
Oh, all right, all right, thank you. All right, moving on to.
Ward 731, 22.
Second. A motion to approve Ward from 731, 22, any comments or adjustments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion passes. Thank you to adjourn, and a motion and a second. Thank you all.